Thank you both. And I want to mention that if you know someone who's interested in what these candidates have to say and they are unable to view tonight, we are recording this and we'll be posting it on our website with the goal of having it up there tomorrow morning. So please share the word if you know someone who's interested. All right, first question is going to go to Bob. And that is, what are your priorities as a county commissioner? And why should we vote for you? One minute.
I think the number one priority will be the development of pretty obvious with the legislation that was passed in Congress last year. That the name of the game in the next five years in local governments is going to be infrastructure. We make help make that happen because no one person makes it happen. It's a combination of working together with the team. That's what we've done with the VIO over the years. We have a good management team, good staff, we've had good board members, good boards. And we hire good professional consultants, contractors, we work with our legislators. And so that would be the number one, but I have several pet projects I want to see come to fruition also. Things such as the veteran cemetery that the county's been working on and also the Taos County Historic Courthouse on the Plaza would be a pet project of mine.
Thank you, Susan, same question. What are your priorities as a potential county commissioner and why should we vote for you?
Um, to effectively carry out the role of, excuse me. To effectively carry out the role of commissioner requires making many decisions. And they are setting again priorities. And right now before us at present with federal money such as the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act signed into law by President Biden, now made available $6,356,060, signed into law by President Biden, now made available. This type of collaboration and dedicated multi-sector networking inclusive of rated funding leveraging ARPA dollars in combination with other funding streams, federal, state grant and town and county dollars. Other money secured are currently 1.2 million for the historic county courthouse by Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez and other state monies appropriated by the governor and legislature. So again, the priority is we have money available and they need, they are going to need to be again accounted for and looked and determined what distribution you're going to be done, what distribution and how they are going to be.
Thank you very much. So Susan, the next question also goes to you. A large portion of this district includes the town of Taos. So what priorities do you have for collaborating with elected officials from the town? And I say this with only a slight bias.
And Susan, if you wouldn't mind unmuting again. Can you unmute, please? There you go.
Okay. The money that are now available to Taos County and that means not just the town and not just the county. It's the other entities around the community and they come through the state probably most likely. There's going to be a lot of collaboration that's going to be necessary. And in the past, it has, Taos County has strides to have, to build that network and to be able to work through the divisions. And in reality, there is no dividing line that says there's town and county lines. We are serving the people of Taos County and that's the municipalities, the tribal and those people making decisions for us.
Thank you, Susan. Bob, what priorities do you have for collaborating with elected officials from the town?
Yes, the town is very important part, a good part of the population and district is centered in the town. I have very close connections with the town. I currently serve on the Town of Taos Marketing Committee. So before COVID, I used to be down at the town attending meetings all the time. But after that, of course, we had Zoom meetings regularly. But that aspect is in helping to diversify the economy, of course, promoting our tourist-based economy and making sure that we have more grocery receipts, taxes coming in to help support and provide for services. But collaboration with the town will be very important. The programs or projects such as a recycling center or the detox center probably won't happen unless there's collaboration. But I personally already reached out to the new here in Taos and have had discussions with him. And there are a number of things that we talked about the city and why the Francis Warner Sanitation District Board. Of course, we have with the Town of Taos. And so I feel pretty comfortable that the town will be very much included in my service on the Taos County Commission.
Thank you, Bob. This next question goes to you first.
And please unmute, sir.
So the lack of affordable workforce housing is impacting the ability of generational residents to continue to live here and also the ability to recruit new people to the area to fill jobs at the medical center, schools and numerous government agencies. What would you suggest to provide more housing?
Yeah, the problem is high cost of housing and lack of affordable housing. And the county right now isn't actually even involved in the low income, moderate income housing because a few years ago, that program was transferred to the Northern New Mexico Regional Housing Authority. But there are a number of things that can be done. We can work with the town also that was done recently, actually, and they did develop a low income, moderate housing budget. In terms of the county, we can work with developers, try to encourage them to develop modular parks that are more low income. When they do build houses, they can not only build the high-end houses that are 500,000 and above, but they should be building houses that are in the lower $200,000, $300,000 range of houses that are more affordable for people that have grown up in Taos and live in Taos.
Thank you. Susan, same question. The lack of affordable housing is impacting the ability of generational residents to continue to live here and also the ability to recruit new people to the area to fill jobs at the medical center, schools and numerous government agencies. What would you suggest to provide more housing?
Again, the, I believe that as we plan, as we plan out this recovery, this COVID-19 pandemic and recovery, we receive money from the 2020 CARES funding to help us through the COVID crisis. But also there's money coming in again, the ARPA money. And I believe that if there's strategies to use that kind of money to bring what's necessary to not just develop, but also plan ahead for the future, the housing necessary for Taos County. We have beautiful landscapes here. We have a beautiful place to live and people want to come to Taos and, but they cannot afford. And so we're having, with the economic crisis, it's affecting even landlords not able to bring down the cost of other housing. So it's something that not just affects the one, the person leasing, but the leasor also. So again, building is almost the solution.
So thank you, Susan. As a follow-up to that, the most recent Taos County Comprehensive Plan reports that vacant homes comprise 34% of the housing stock in Taos. Would you support legislation at the state level to impose a tax on vacant homeowners? Why or why not?
That would have to be studied, the impact of that. And that, I believe, is something that, that it should be addressed in the assessors, in the assessor side as to what kind of, what that would mean to those people, but also to the tax base. And again, we're always looking at the tax base, trying to capture new growth, which is recurring revenue, a recurring revenue for Taos County's budget. So again, it's something that needs to be studied very, very carefully because it, it affects, like I said, I believe it affects the tax base for Taos County.
So Bob, I'll ask you the same question. The 2017 Taos County Comprehensive Plan reports that vacant homes comprise 34% of the housing stock in Taos. Would you support legislation at the state level to impose a tax on vacant homeowners? Why or why not?
Yeah, that is, that is an issue, no question about it. I think it would have to be evaluated, discussed and see if legislation actually could be passed to remedy that. But I think what the county could do is look at how these vacant homes are being used. If they're used, being used for vacation rentals, I think the county can monitor that more intently. And there's revenues to be, to be received from that because there are a number of those homes that are being used for vacation rentals that the county could be receiving additional taxes in that way.
So Bob, this question goes to you first. Thinking about what we can do at the countywide level to improve the housing situation, are there any changes to the county land use code that could assist with promoting more affordable workforce housing?
Yeah, the subdivision regs probably need to be looked at. There are houses being built, there are houses, there are 12 houses being built across the street from where I live. And it's not a full-fledged subdivision developed unit. It's being done in different ways. So they didn't go through the subdivision regs. But I think we just need to look that closer. We need to encourage and work with the developers in any case, in whatever method they're doing. And they can build low-income homes or, or at least more affordable homes in, in, in the construction that they're, that they are completing. But, but yes, the answer would be that we do need to look at closer at some of the subdivision regs.
Thank you. So Susan, I'll ask you the same question. Are there any changes to the county land use code that can assist with providing more affordable workforce housing?
Again, I have revisiting the land use regulations as part of the priorities by Taos County. And again, it includes the affordable housing issue. And but as I, again, as we look at the land available, this is land that has, is, is part of the heritage of the people that have lived here in Taos County. And some of it is agricultural. Do we, how is it that it, how is it going to affect the landscape? That's what people ask me. How would all these buildings of housing and development affect who Taos, what Taos is for us? And but we do welcome, we do welcome and we need the the workforce in our community. We need the doctors, we need the nurses, we need the skilled labor. We need people coming into Taos providing these. And there, we need teachers. We cannot, we cannot recruit teachers because they can't find housing. U and M, the same thing. So we, there is, again, there's a crisis and an issue. So we need to study again, look at these land use regs and see what it is that is going to accommodate this type of growth of the affordable housing for the people of Taos County and the workforce coming in.
Thank you, Susan. So what is your vision for growth in town and county?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Economic development. And again, what is it that is going to keep our young people here in Taos? We have a wonderful opportunity because we have U and M. We have the ability to educate our young people. And I listened to our chancellor, the Chancellor of U and M describing the recruitment of our children into, into the, into the education structure. And that's from the fifth grade, year after year, encouraging them, giving up to get educated here in Taos. And but we want them to stay in Taos. So what would we do? Again, we have to provide those, those jobs for them, the professional jobs that, that give them a career here in Taos so that they would want to stay and move forward in raising families and in that type of, in this type of structure that we have in Taos.
Thank you. Bob, what ideas do you have to diversify Taos County's economy and how would you implement them?
Thank you for the question, Darian. When I was born in Taos, but when I was very young, my family had to move from Taos and my father had to to support a growing family of 10, had to move up to Colorado. He got a job working for the Union Pacific Railroad. And so I ended up growing up there, going to school there, going to college there. I came back as soon as I could get back here. And so the economy is, what happened in the 50s is we moved out of subsistence agrarian economy and into the tourism-based economy. So that's what we have now. And that actually, a lot of rural communities would love to have our tourism-based economy because we do receive grocery receipts as a result of that. However, we do need to diversify and continue to look at what we can do there. U and M Taos is a good example. U and M Taos now has 64 permanent employees, number of adjunct instructors. And it has become somewhat of an economic engine. Kit Carson Co-op is promoting solar and they're doing a pretty good job of it. That's a possibility. We have high tech, we have the internet now. People are actually moving to Taos now and working here and also generating a little economic activity in that way. But things are changing, they're very slow. Renewable resources, like all these things. But, but overall, we just need to continue to work at it one step at a time.
Bob, so this next question is for you first.
Okay.
Do you support the expansion of the airport to possibly allow for regular commercial air service? Why or why not?
Yeah, the expansion of the airport is very important to the community. I, that is under the approval of the Town of Taos because the Town of Taos owns and manages the airport and is about to unveil, as I understand, unveil the master plan that I think everybody's interested in looking at that plan and see what it actually entails. But like as many people have stated, that they are not necessarily against the airport, but they are concerned with the prioritization of funds going to the airport over some of the needs for the people of town, the town or the people of Taos.
Thank you. Susan, same question. Do you support the expansion of the airport to possibly allow for regular commercial air service? Why or why not?
Well, I believe that we have to wait and see what the town is going to present to us and see what, what it entails and what response or reaction the people of Taos County are going to have to that extent. But I believe that it has been proven of, of what, what type of infrastructure has been developed so far and where it's going to go from here. And is it going to bring tourism? Is it, is it going to just affect the ski valley? Is it going to, are people going to come and, and shop and dine in the county? It's to be seen, but I would like to collaborate again with, I would collaborate with it, with the Town of Taos with an open mind and to see what exactly they have in mind for us and how we fit in to the picture because we are again networking and collaborating with them on these big infrastructure projects, whether it's our projects or their projects. And the airport is one of their projects, but it's to be seen. And I would like to, I'd be open to see what, what they are going to present to us.
Thank you. And Susan, what ideas do you have to diversify Taos's, Taos County's economy? And how would you implement those ideas?
Change in, in a community like Taos has to be a gradual change. And because we have to consider what it is that we have, we hold sacred in, in our, in our community, in our land and our mountains. And we have, again, we have tourism, we have the skiing part of it. And we have the, the Rio Grande, the waters that flow through, the beautiful scenery, it's everything that. And, and I think, again, we need to expand again, the tourism, but also make the, make the services available that would accommodate this type of growth. And I, the thought came to me when, when we were discussing people coming into Taos or moving into Taos is that a lot of people now work from home. They're going to want to buy homes here in Taos, they're going to want to live here in Taos and they're going to work out of their homes. Sending via Zoom, sending their information out to companies, to companies where they're, they're, they're working out of, but yet their home is Taos, would be Taos.
Thank you. Bob, what's your vision for growth in town and county?
Yeah, well, as I mentioned earlier, we are an economy. And that's actually good in a lot of ways. It's, it's nice that we do in fact have so many people that see Taos as an attractive place that, that Taos is a place that has a lot of history, has a lot of culture and traditions, it has outdoor recreation. And so that is, is well and good, but we just need to expand on that. As I mentioned already, the education, renewable resources and even construction. Construction is actually a pretty healthy industry in Taos. And we of course have helped that to a great extent with our infrastructure construction and sewer water because in order to build more and better housing that is needed, especially affordable housing, the infrastructure is definitely needed.
Thank you. So we'll do a lightning round question right now and it relates to revenue. Obviously, we can't get anything done without some sort of money coming into the county coffers. And tourism is part of that. Manufacturing is another, the construction industry is another big driver. We also have government, schools, things like that. Now, there's a new green economy that has just opened up in this state. So this is going to be a quick yes or no question for each of you. And Bob, you'll go first. Do you support the, the recent legalization of recreational cannabis in Taos County and New Mexico?
It is legal now as of April 1st. It passed through the legislature and it is a law. I support it.
Thank you, Susan.
It is, it was approved, it is the law for the legalization of cannabis. But my concern as a school board member is the impact on our children, the impact on our community and the impact on the homes. And with that said, I, I was not, I have not been in favor of cannabis being approved. Because again, I believe it just opened, it's, it's a gateway to other drugs. We always already have issues with DWI, we already have issues providing detox. And, and we're looking for a detox facility here in Taos. And programs, I'm not, I am not in favor. I just cannot see that we would have to look to this type of revenue source to fund our, our general fund, to fund our resources here in Taos. Definitely not.
Thank you. And there's no doubt that drug and alcohol addiction have ravaged our county. We see needless deaths all the time, many amongst our youth, the future of our community. And we see many grandparents raising grandchildren because of multi-generational addiction issues. So Susan, you first. What do you think causes addiction and what do you see as the best way to solve this issue in our community? Or at least address it more proactively?
I believe that is building strong homes. I believe that the, the county commission approved a resolution. It was number 2022-16. And it's a resolution in support of 100% community ensuring 10 vital services for surviving and thriving in Taos County, New Mexico. And some of these, these services were, the five services for surviving are medical, dental care, behavioral health, air housing security programs, food security programs and transportation. And the other five for thriving are parent support, early childhood education, community schools, youth mentor programs and job training. So it, it's birthed in the home that it takes a community to raise our children, to raise you, the youth in, in a positive manner that would want to build careers for themselves to be, to, to absorb what it, what it is that we're trying to implement, bringing in the church, bringing in those, those programs that are available, these. So again, I welcome the, what the commission did in resolution number 2022-16.
Thank you. And as a quick follow-up, what else specifically can the county and individual commissioners do to promote those topics that you mentioned in 100% community?
Again, I think they are in support of what's already in place. But I believe that it is acknowledging that these programs come before the county. And voicing, they're the voice of the community, the cry of the community for the youth that are, that are in addiction. But yet they have solutions, they have, they've made themselves available. And I see at the, at the Taos Municipal Schools, the teachers are incredible mentors to our children. They're educators, they just don't stop there. They care for these, our children. U and M, the same thing, the, the programs that are out there, the, the therapists, the behavioral, whatever, what, what we're offering them is incredible. And if we avail ourselves of these services, it would be to our benefit, to open up our homes, to embrace those, those things that, that are, might be out of the box. But yet we are, are saying we need assistance here. We need the help, we need the support.
Thank you. So Bob, we sometimes perceive addiction as an individual's problem instead of societies. What changes in the community? What changes in the community and specifically in District One, do you think would reduce addiction and its negative effects?
Yeah, I don't know, scientists and doctors know what causes addiction. That I think most, most doctors probably say that it's a disease and not, not totally attributed to personal character, personal activity or actions. But the schools are, are important here, definitely should have substance abuse counseling going on and also the families, it really comes back to the family, strong families with good parenting are pretty much able to avoid this. I, I remember when I was a kid back in the sixties, I had a conversation with my, my dad and Madiwana was around at that time. And I remember him telling me, oh, well, if you smoke once, you'll wanna continue smoking. And that just kinda stayed with me, just like until now, I still think about it. But parenting is definitely important. But kids that do get into, we need to have substance abuse programs. And then if they're really heavy into other drugs, then we need to have programs such as a detox center going. Because it is, it is a concern within the community, we have to deal with it.
Thank you. As, as a follow-up, Bob, thinking about my own youth here and just the lack of opportunities, healthy opportunities that one could afford regularly. There's, there's not a community center managed by the county in District One, do you think that would help at all?
I think it would definitely help, we need to have community centers in every community. We're fortunate, we have one in Yonka Mado and Talpa has a pretty active community center. The, the Los Corlos Center needs to be improved, there, there's one there, but it's not really active or open. Now, of course, we have a youth and family center, but a community center for the entire community also would be very good. We need to, to pay some attention to what we can do to, to uh, fund and make sure that our community centers are functioning well, they're active within these communities.
Thank you very much. So Bob, this next question's gonna go to you first. Holy Cross Medical Center building is owned by Taos County, yet the county maintains very little say in the overall operation of the medical center. Many people have suggested that the Holy Cross Medical Center Board of Trustees should have a representative from the county and also from the town. Do you support this? Why or why not?
I, I would support this. The history of it goes back sometime, I remember when the Blue Ribbon Commission was established in the hospital was set up, run by contract, by outside management contractors. And that's the way it's been and it has worked to some degree, but you're right, the county is not directly involved. And some people might say that, well, maybe the county shouldn't be involved, that's our healthcare uh, hospital and needs to be run by professionals and no politics involved. But at this point in time, I think at the very least, the county should have a representative on the board. And it, the whole operation and management of it should be looked at. Of course, the county did put in place a mill levy in place to help operations and that was good, I voted for that. But we need to look at it and scrutinize it just a little bit closer.
Thank you. So Susan, I have a hospital-related question for you as well. Every few years, Holy Cross Medical Center and really Taos Health Systems ask for, asks for support from the community for the mill levy funding. And there's no doubt that we need to support our hospital. But how can we do so in a way that promotes long-term stability for the medical center without imposing too significant a burden on taxpayers?
There is that, that, that levy. And that generates one point four million dollars for the, for capital and infrastructure for the hospital. It was, it was managed, again, it, it came through, it funneled through the county, again, totally accountable at the county level. And, but then the, the hospital came again and asking for more money. And there was a G R T that was available. And the county gave that to the hospital without any restrictions at all. And I would like to, I would like to visit that G R T. And, and, and again, it, I believe that it is in the tune of one point, another one point four million dollars in operations. But how, how the money, the money is spent and what does, what the county, the, the Taos County sacrificed to give them that money, to provide that money to the hospital was detrimental to the county. And so I would like to revisit, again, their plan to use that money, how it's being used. And I would like to have someone sit from the county, sit at that, at that table, at the board table of the, of the, of the hospital boards.
Thank you very much. Right, I have one more hospital question for both of you. This is a lightning round, just a quick yes or a no, all I ask for. Thinking about the management of the hospital, should the county reach out to organizations like University of New Mexico or Presbyterian about maybe taking over the long-term operation of the hospital facilities? Susan, you first, just quick yes.
Yes, I've heard that from a lot of constituents. Yes.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, yes.
So our next question, and this will go to Bob, you first. Do you believe in human-caused climate change? Yes or no? And then the second, the next part is, what steps can the county take to address climate change at the local level? And would you prioritize addressing whatever we can here?
Uh, yes, we definitely have climate change. Uh, what we could do is just to do everything possible to try to reduce our carbon footprint. I don't know about the plastic bags, the town tried that, I think they have second talks about it. But we definitely do need to recycle. And then we, we also need to encourage solar energy, electric cars. We'd have to have more charging stations, but we need to go in that direction.
Thank you. So Susan, same question, do you believe in human-caused climate change? Why or why not? What steps can the county take to address climate change at the local level? And would you prioritize whatever we can do here?
Um, I do have that as, as one of my priorities, climate change and how are we contributing locally? But engaging with workable solutions globally and nationally, what is being done? But again, that, do we think, are we thinking green? Solar, electric cars, the possibility of even our buses being electric? Let's look, let's be innovative, let's think outside the box and let's open up our minds to explore what it is, we have blue skies and that that we can tap into, and again, to the solar part, but also taking, the recycling is so important. And the collaboration between the town and county is gonna be so critical to us as how we go forward. Because it has an impact on our community, as you walk through even the forests, you, you see that, that if there's trash, the animals aren't the ones that are trashing our forests. It's the human, the humanity of, of us that don't take ownership of what, the, of what we have as, as, as beautiful, which is forest land. We're at this, in the, in the foothills of our, of our mountains. Let's preserve them, preserve our town.
Thank you. So this next question comes from the audience. Susan, you first, how exactly would you protect our scarce water resources based on what we know about climate change?
How would we protect our water? Again, I believe that, that through conservation, through conservation, again, it's worth living in a, in a drought situation, we've had, we've had some snowstorms. But we, they were such needed snowstorms. So we're, we have a situation with drought that is affecting our ag. And how does that? What does that say to, to our, our Asecas? What does it say to our rivers? What does it say to our wells? It has to be looked at very closely and we have to participate as constituents and care what it is that, that we hold dear in, in our land and that is the water. And because it's, it's a source of life for not just us, but animals.
Thank you. Bob, how exactly would you protect our scarce water resources based on what we know about climate change?
Well, I've been involved in water issues for a long time, I served on the Taos County Water Advisory Committee. I am a parciante on the Secias, of course, I'm on the Water Sanitation District Board. And we, we need to conserve, of course. Regionalization is one of the things that we can do in order to work together. Right now, we have a situation where we have a number of entities providing water, we have the Water Sanitation Districts, we have the town of Taos. And we have the Mutant Domestic Water Associations. And cooperation there would help, we need to start more communications, have collaborations. At some point in time, we need to even consider having one system that would work where all the systems would be interconnected. And that would be, that would provide a situation where there would be a backup uh, source of water for each entity, we don't have that now. So we just need to protect our water rights. Uh, one way to protect the water rights on the Secias particularly is that we need to irrigate. New Mexico laws based on beneficial use of water. So if you don't use your irrigation water rights for, for, for uh, years, you could possibly lose it. But in any case, uh, the, all of these different ways we can, we can work to protect our water rights.
Thank you very much, Bob. This next question goes to you first and then it'll go to Susan after. What values do you share with the Democratic Party? And would you please also share a personal story about how Democratic Party values or policies have helped you or someone you know?
Well, I'm a longtime Democrat, of course, my grandfather was a Roosevelt Democrat, my father was a Roosevelt Democrat. I've been a Democrat all my, all my life, as long as I've been able, eligible to vote. I was in the military when I first registered to vote and I had to walk about two miles to go get a, to go sign up for an absentee ballot. But I walked the, 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 the two miles and received my ballot and voted in that first election and voted ever since. But I think the Democrats as a whole just need to, we need to toot our horn a lot more than we do. For example, the passage of this infrastructure last year in Congress, that was one of the biggest achievements and it happened within the first eight months of the Biden administration. And we, we are the party that really supports services and programs for people. So we need to toot our horn about that and we need to be active. We need to be active within our, our local party, state party. I, I have attended state conventions sometime back now. But I have always attempted to attend precinct meetings. And our, we are fortunate that our Taos County Democratic Party is very active. It's probably the, one of the most organized parties in the whole state, if not probably several states. So I'm a very strong Democrat, very supportive of people being active as strong Democrats.
Thank you, Bob. Susan, same question.
Again, I, when I was eligible to, to, to vote, I became a Democrat. And so I voted. And at one point, I was, again, I'm gonna mention his name, Billy Knight, was serving as president of the, of the Democratic Party. And he asked me if, if I would want to serve and as, as a secretary treasurer. And, and I, I thought I had not ever had, had the opportunity to, to serve in any capacity just to volunteer. So I thought this is just a good beginning. And it opened my eyes to what the democratic process is. And the, and the, and the political process is the way that, that, that people get elected to office and into government. And that became a platform for me that I, I thought I was, I came out of my kitchen into, into an, an elected office, which became so exciting for me because I was able to, to serve, to establish a career for myself, but also to serve the people that, because I am a people person and I enjoy this service, to be a servant leader for the people of Taos County.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to ask a few lightning round questions. Again, these are simple yes, no, or one-word answers. And please keep it to yes, no, or one other word, hopefully not a swear word. And while we do that, I will also ask the audience, if you have any questions that you would like to ask, we will have time for one, maybe two questions depending on how long it goes. So start thinking about those questions and put them in the chat or raise your hand. And we will call on you popcorn style after this lightning round. So Susan, first question for you, red or green?
Excuse me?
Red or green?
Green.
Bob?
Christmas.
All right, Bob, best burrito in District One?
What was the question?
What's the best burrito in District One?
I, I, Montes is the closest one to me.
Susan?
Burritos out of my kitchen.
All right, Susan, which District One road needs the most attention?
The Ranchitos, the Ranchitos Road. Okay.
The Blueberry Hill Road.
I was gonna say that, I can't speak to.
Hot topic, Bob, speed bumps or no speed bumps?
No speed bumps.
All right, Susan?
No speed bumps.
Okay. Susan, do we need more dollar stores?
No.
Bob?
No more.
So Bob, what type of business would you like to see started or moved to Taos?
I would like to see a high-tech company that is clean, uses very little water and employs some people.
Okay, Susan?
Our children are very high-tech. So again, I would like to concur that we, that something is brought to the kids that would ignite their desire to learn, their desire, we have U N M, they're, they're, they have an excellent nursing program. But why not build it up where it can be a a data tech, techie that would attract our children to go to school?
Thank you. Last lightning round question for both of you. Susan, you first, what's one small thing that can improve how people access county services or information?
Repeat that again, the first part.
Yep.
What?
What's one small thing that can improve how people access county services or information?
Again, I believe that it's being made available. As we look around and see the structures that are in place, the website is the best source of information for people that want to learn more about, let's say, schools or the county or the town. I mean, people are Googling and they, and, and what the information that's, that's on those websites is information that they, they're gonna utilize. So the more information that is put there by, by companies or, let's say even Kit Carson. If, you know, jobs available, they're looking for jobs, they're looking for information on places to visit, places to eat. And it, it's all, it's all. And it, it's all, it's all on your, on your phone. And accessing your phone.
Thank you. So Bob, same question. What's one small thing that can improve how people access county services or information?
More online information, especially on the Taos County Clerk's website.
Okay. We've got a good question from the audience. And this comes from Danielle Freeman. Bob, you first. Would you support upgrading public transportation in the county? And what would be the benefits to the people and the environment? And that is, let's do 30 seconds on that one.
Yes, we, we do need more public information. Of course, we have the Blue Bus. Functions well to, to a degree. But a lot of people are reliant on public information or public transportation. And so we need to upgrade it in a way we can and keep it going.
Thank you. Susan, same question.
Again, we have the Blue Bus and that started off very slow. Again, change, change for, for the community, but more, more than not, people are using that Blue Bus. And they travel, I mean, from, from Peneasco, they pick up the, our employees. Especially, I just talked to a friend of mine and she says, I'm using the Blue Bus again, Susan, she said, because of the gas prices. So even more so now. We're, we're going to see our Blue Buses fill up, filled up more. But they traveled to, to Santa Fe and the people from there catch the real runner to Albuquerque. Public transportation, I believe, is, is going to be more utilized than we would have ever dreamed for, for Taos County.
Thank you very much. One more question from the audience and then we'll turn it over to each of you to ask a question of the other. And then we'll move on to closing statements. So Susan, you first, and again, 30 seconds for a response. It takes months to get a title policy in Taos County. What can be done with the county clerk's office and equipment to make this more efficient? Susan, you first.
I don't think that it's in the county clerk's office. I think, again, looking at what COVID 19, the pandemic did, well, again, to Taos County, but also to the title companies. And I understand that there are approximately 300 titles waiting to be closed. And, and how you expedite those, again, they're being processed by people. That, again, they have their, their processes and they have their way of doing things and you just wait on them. I talked to an attorney the other day and he said, I'm in a, I'm in a dilemma. He says, I, I have contracts, you know, purchasing contracts that I have prepared. Again, waiting to be, for title companies, for these, these title companies to close. And on these purchases. So again, I don't believe that it's at the, at the county clerk's office. It's what has trickled down because of COVID.
Okay, thank you very much. Bob, same question.
Yeah, well, we just need a major effort at the Taos County Clerk's Office to get all these records copied and online, available to the people that need it in order to close these transactions.
Thank you. So now each of you have the opportunity to ask a question of the other. And Bob, you may ask the question of Susan. Susan, you have one minute to respond.
Susan, I, I would ask the question, what experience do you have on, in developing infrastructure? Whether it's water, sewer, or other type of community infrastructure?
Now, what comes to mind, to my mind is, as the grant administrator and then even as the finance director, I oversaw and I budgeted all the grants that came into Taos County. It didn't matter if they were nominal grants, but to, again, the, the, well, I consider the Million Dollar Highway. And that was placed on my desk. My, the manager told me, Susan, this is, I want you to administer this. I administered a lot of, a lot of federal grants. And, but again, making sure that they were accounted for properly, that we were able to get everything that, that budgeted in a way that everything was utilized to, to provide either the services or to provide the infrastructure that was necessary for, for, for the county's use.
Thank you. And Susan, you may now ask a question of Bob, and Bob, you will have one minute to respond.
How familiar are you with the, the Taos County budget process?
The Taos County budget is 13 million dollar budget. We have about 50 million in debt. The annual budget is a 13 million. But I have extensive experience with budgets since I was the Director of the Taos Education Center with Northern New Mexico College was operating college program here. And then when I served on school board, that was another experience in budgeting and that process. Within the Rosarantos Water Sanitation District, of course, we start the budget process now. It, it's developed in concert with the staff. And we determine what the fund balance was from last year and what we need budgeted for the, for the next year. We have to have the first, first draft of it complete by June 1st. And then the Department of Finance Administration will get back to us and approve it by, by July 31st and, or July, July 1st. And then we find, we do a final approval after tweaking it by July 31st. It's an extensive process, but we've gone through it many times. So we're real comfortable with it.
Thank you very much. So candidates, I want to thank you both for your time tonight. Members of the audience, I want to thank you for tuning in as well. And we will be posting this recording online on our website, hopefully tomorrow, taosvotesblue.com. I ask all of you to tune in to next week's forum with our two candidates for State Representative District 42. The incumbent Christina Ortiz and challenger Florence Miera. And that race, like every other race affecting Taos County, will be decided in the primary cycle this year because there is no Republican opposition in November. So Election Day is June 7th. Early voting starts May 10th. Please do your civic duty, share this information, vote and keep motivated because even though we won't have Taos County ballot, candidates challenged in November, we still have a few other statewide races that we need to come together to win. So that said, I will now turn it over to candidates to give two minutes each for closing statements. Susan Romero, you may go first.
Susan Trujillo.
I'm sorry. I am so sorry. So, so, so.
I would like to describe the main responsibilities of a, of a commissioner. An effective county commissioner can leave a legacy of good works and make an impact on people's lives. It is the closest level of government to the people and one that provides the greatest challenge is called building a sure foundation and a model that creates leaders for the, for the future. Servant leaders and leadership, leading by example. In a county commission, the form of, of government is a body of elected commissioners who serve both the executive and the legislative duties. Meaning they enact local ordinances, administer them, and establish policies governing a county. To make good decisions, commissioners need good information. The gathering of necessary information and statistics requires time by commissioners and staff. The Taos County Board of Commissioners consists of five members. An effective commission communicates and educates citizens about the needs of the county through commission meetings, special meetings, joint intergovernmental meetings and other community meetings to ensure that all residents of Taos County and tribal nations be included in this, in decision-making. And most importantly, through the annual budget process, the commission approves the funding and expenditures to provide services to maintain the quality of life in the county. Therefore, a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities of a commissioner can lead to a more collaboration and dedication public sector networking model, increasing the effectiveness of all participants slash stakeholders within the county and other entities. Thank you so much for this evening.
Thank you, Susan. And Bob, to be fair with Susan, I have to call you Bob Trujillo for a minute. Bob, two minutes.
I want to thank the Taos County Democratic Party for sponsoring this Zoom forum. And I want to thank all of you for tuning in. So I elect FR Bob Romero as county commissioner. Number one, I have been active and involved in community for a number of years. I know the community, the history of Taos. I know the current issues. This knowledge can be used to get resolution, to, to, to bring resolution to many of the issues facing Taos County. Number two, I have vast experience in government and in the development of community infrastructure, which will be the name of the game for the next four, five years. And also in overseeing large budgets. And my experience is broad-based. Number three, I have, I have been very, very active and very successful in helping to develop consensus on the boards that I have served on in order to get people to work together, work as a team, get things done and complete projects. I have a passion to see some community county projects come to fruition. And the mind include the, the Veteran Cemetery, I'm a veteran. Also the Taos County Historic Courthouse on the Plaza. I have a passion for this. And also I, I feel that this is a very important time to get more involved. I used to tell my students that democracy is fragile, that requires eternal vigilance to maintain. Now we see that democracy is threatened at the international and national level. And so we at the local level need to step up, get involved. We, we can run process or we can get more informed. And at the very least, get registered and vote. Remember, your vote is your voice. So vote to us and us. I would appreciate your vote on, starting on May 10th and leading up to election on June 7th. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you both. We hope to see all of you next week, same time, same place for another forum in your living room. Have a great night.